Hello.
With that said, Mr. Haynes, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Well, we can just through the flag of the United States of America. And consider the reporting of which is things. Why nation and we got in the physical liberty and justice world.
Oh, thank you, Mr.
John.
First up on the agenda, six point one MSBA P card. Good evening.
Can I, I wouldn't go ahead and invite the board to come up with Dr. Coward. She has a presentation for us. Through our purchasing card that we use for the district and it's a great picture opportunity. Is that, is that one of those big checks?
As they're talking about, be sure we do what's happening tonight. So I'm not the best guy on the road. And so Smithville School District is not a regular, but four thousand two hundred and twenty-eight dollars. The Three School Board Association Procurement Card or P Card system. The payments list solution P card program saves school district money by preventing controls over their spending and reducing paperwork for staff. By using the P card, school districts have the ability to restrict purchases to own certain product categories and implement spending limits with each card holder. Participate in school districts also.
I could use that. Also receive a rebate based on the purchases that you have made using the card. The leadership team of Smithville School District is to be commended for taking advantage of this P card system and returning money to the district. So it can be spent where you want it spent best. The P card program was first offered by MSBA in two thousand and five. And this year fifty-three Missouri school districts are receiving two thousand five, I'm sorry, two hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars in rebates because of the use of the program. And the rebate earned in this district is the largest earned by the district since the public acting, excuse me. The rebuke, the, the district has also earned the second largest rebate in the state this year. So congratulations. You have accumulated twenty-four thousand four hundred and forty dollars in rebates. So congratulations. I'll take that.
Send back.
Next, next on the agenda, seven point one adoption and modification of agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Well, I have a second. Okay, I have a motion and a second. I do believe that we have a request to modify the agenda.
Yes.
And so this is the discussion. So.
I'd like to move eight point two or eight point six to new business, please.
Eight point two and eight point six. Are we going to move that to new business? Aaron, you let me know when you're ready. And you're moving it to eleven point two and eleven point three. Is that correct?
Right.
Ready.
Okay. Is there any other further discussion on this? If not, please vote on the modified agenda. Motion passes. Next up. Approval of the consent agenda items. Eight point one approve regular session minutes for September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four. Eight point two now, is that correct? Eight point two is contractual agreements. Eight point three is Maple Woods. Uh, agreement. Eight point four is personnel report. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved second.
I have a motion and a second. Please vote. Motion passes. All right, nine point zero comments from the audience. Nine point two superintendent.
Yes, we have two groups we would like to recognize this evening. I'd first like to invite our Board of Education. To come to the front of the boardroom so we can recognize our first group. During that time, I would also ask any of the middle school staff to please stand. Our middle school team last year determined that they wanted to tackle attendance as one of their goals. And this past year they worked with EAB, which is a partner we have that does research nationwide. And not only K through twelve, but also in working with higher ed as well. And their focus was on intended attendance improvement initiatives. Working alongside Mr. Wannenboren and Mr. Haynes, EAB shared findings from national research. And explored the middle school team's strategies to mitigate absenteeism. The implementation of these strategies yield immediate and sustained positive outcomes. Uh, the state of Missouri has a goal for ninety percent of your students to attend ninety percent of the time. The previous year, about eighty percent of the students attended ninety percent of the time, which did not meet the state ninety ninety attendance threshold. The middle school team last year successfully reduced this percentage by half. And within a year met the ninety ninety attendance threshold, which I can tell you after. In twenty-three years in this business is an amazing accomplishment to increase that by ten percent. So we wanted to take a chance and recognize. Um, I know Mr. Winterboard invited the staff to come and celebrate in this because it is not something that occurs individually. There are a lot of people that would love to be able to have this result, result, and we are happy that not only is our. Middle school recognizes one of those tremendous schools. EAB published multiple articles and shared across the nation. The success story of Smithville Middle School, including when the superintendent's round table comes together, they do it four times throughout the summer. They were one of the four schools that were talked about through their systems approach to improve. Um, something within their school, ours was attended. So I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Winterboard. And then before you guys all sit down, I'll let Mr. Winterboard introduce you. We'd like to have you guys come up. We'll shake your hand and take a wonderful picture.
Thank you. Appreciate it. First of all, I just want to say thanks to Mr. Haynes, to the staff. Um, Dr. Moss spoke and said this very eloquently. It, it takes a team. And um, it was, it was amazing effort by, by everyone. We do a team approach in the middle school. And to see our team unite and, and help support students and, and work on absenteeism was amazing. When we started this journey, I didn't. I didn't, our goal was to get ninety to ninety. But then when we achieved it, I was, I was blown away. I didn't know if we would make that significant of a gain in one year, but. And the good thing is, is with our systems this year, we're, we're at the exact same place we were last year at our first checkpoint. So it looks like we're going to be able to maintain that goal, which is, which is awesome, implementing the same systems we did last year. So. Uh, we're excited about those results too. So thank you, everybody. Thank you, staff. Thank you, students. Thank you, parents. For, for uh, working with us to make sure our kids are at school because that's the best way we can educate them is if they're there with us. So thank you very much.
You guys are my.
So I'll, I'll introduce our staff that were able to come to uh, this evening. Uh, first of all, we have Mr. Jeff Haynes, our assistant principal. Adam Rosky, uh, Angie V Brock. Jared Herbers, Jenny Van Winkle, Lacey Boyston, and Erica Redding.
Probably got through.
All right. Also connected with our middle school, I'd like to recognize several middle school students. So if you were one of our middle school students that attended. The Northland Youth Leadership Summit, would you please stand? All right. On October second, sixteen middle school students along with Stuko sponsors, Lacey Boyson. And Jenny Van Winkle, home, would you guys please stand as well? Attended the Northland Youth Leadership Summit. This event was themed unite and ignite. Featured keynote speaker, Dr. Yvonne Harvey Williams. Student participa- students participated in workshops covering topics such as leadership, coping skills. Substance abuse prevention, social media safety. And we want to thank our sponsorship partner, Community in Action, who paid for all of the entry fees for these students to attend. Allowing them to engage in this impactful leadership experience. This is hosted by our Northland Chambers. There are school districts throughout the Northland that they got to interact with as well. So thank you guys so much. Congratulations. Now comes the awkward part. So I don't know who you guys want to point out to go first. I would just like you to introduce yourself. Introduce anyone that came with you that cares and loves, loves you. And then we would ask you to come up, shake hands, and we'll take a picture. Does anyone want to go first? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Molly Dunn and this is my mom, Mary Dunn. She brought me here.
Do you get to pet, pet, pick who gets a pet, do?
Um, my name is Bailey Meyer and my dad brought her here, Anne Meyer.
Um, I'm Eden Rosky and my mom and dad brought me.
I'm Josie Seiler and my mom Kathy Seiler brought me.
I'm Brooklyn Runker and Josie's mom Kathy brought me.
I'm Brynlee Tuliger, my mom Carrie Harrison, and my sister Kim.
Yeah, I'm sure it's that door to the receipt.
Oh, come on.
One more time. Alright, cool.
Thank you, guys. Please grab a cookie. Yes, do not.
You probably don't want.
You do not have to stay. You're welcome to go.
He thought you were getting her in trouble. Welcome to.
It is, it is always great to recognize our students and our staffs. They do amazing, amazing jobs. I can tell you in the school districts and schools that I'm aware of, if you could have told a school that they could have gone to seventy-nine percent. To meeting ninety ninety, they would have been like, give me that playbook. I'll implement it. So a lot of credit to that. And then. To have those sixteen kids go represent us at the Northland Leadership Summit was amazing. Next month, we will recognize their high school counterparts as well. Um, along with several others. So really excited to do that. Um, had a couple of updates I wanted to share. One, just wanted to remind everyone. Of our community forum where we will ta- talk about capital projects. As well as what a potential levy transfer would mean for the district. It's next Tuesday in the high school cafeteria. We do ask everyone to please sign up. Please sign up to come. We plan on having a great event, trying to get a lot of engagement from our community. That will be followed by a survey. In which we will send community wide to all those contacts that we have to try to get additional input as well.
What time is that?
It's Tuesday in the high school cafeteria from at six o'clock. And even if you can only come for part of it, please do. We would love to have as many participants as we can. The other is our next community engagement event, which begins a week from tomorrow is opening night. Your good man Charlie Brown will be debuting in the Performing Arts Center. There are three performances on the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, all starting at seven o'clock. We have as part of this community event connected with several community organizations. Uh, we've been to the Chamber, Kiwanis Rotary. Um, Denise went down to the Senior Center, all uh, encouraging them to come. We gave them free tickets. As being part of that, we're going to connect with CIA. So Stacia, please look for that coming as president. And then we also sent connections to our retirees. To try to get them to come. The two that I were able to talk to, Mrs. Clower and Mrs. Atkins. Both were very, very thankful. They thought that was a great idea. And we're going to pass that on to everyone that they were still connected with. So very excited to see um, the performance coming up. And I think it'll be a great performance. They participated in the parade if you were able to see it and it's going to be a great event. The only other piece of information I had was our um, cohort enrollment update. Each September and January, we submit. Our cohort to the state of Missouri to impact our state funding. This year we did anticipate a, a pretty big decrease in enrollment because we graduated our largest graduating class of two hundred and forty-five students. Um, if you see within here, one of the surprises we had is we had a significant amount of growth at the elementary level. Where we had almost fifty students added to our elementary schools over the, from. The end of last year, what we predicted in kindergarten until now. That is a great thing. We have traditionally seen most of our growth in grade six and above. So to see that at the younger grade levels is, is tremendous. With the number of students we had come in, this is actually a less. Um, sure, uh, our enrollment's higher than anticipated. So. Uh, Mr. Kruger had developed uh, enrollment pattern probably that Dr. Leachman or Dr. Lagard started and they carried on. Predicted us to be at about minus thirty students. If you remember, we had Zonda, the demographer come in and give a presentation last January. They predicted us to be down twenty-two students or twenty-five students. We're down nineteen on the official count day. Just so you guys know, since then, we're up ten more students. So we're back up above twenty-five hundred. Which we appreciate. That means there is anticipated growth coming. You can see our cohort data there. That's predictive of our own internal measures. Zonda, the demographer is a little bit more aggressive. Than that moving forward. My guess is it's probably going to come somewhere in the middle. Probably won't be as aggressive as what the demographer shared. Probably won't be as low um, initially is what our model has predicted, but. Excited about the enrollment. We continue to try to manage what that growth looks like and anticipate in the future. Part of our conversation next Tuesday. We'll be talking about not only what our enrollment is now, but also information that the city. Has shared with us in our partnerships of anticipated growth within. Their boundaries with additional rooftops as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about our upcoming events. Our enrollment data that you guys may have.
I think the most interesting aspect, you pointed that out, Mo, is, is the growth at the elementary level as opposed to the secondary level, which is unique.
Yes.
To our, our past history. So interesting to see that the uh, there's a lot of your families coming into the community and hopefully that can be sustained going forward.
I agree. You know, when you, when you look at what are anticipated with it, with what it was, and I'll get to it a little bit in the budget document, you'll see our elementary, there's about a twenty-year. History in there and you'll see that this is the largest elementary class we've had in, in several years. Um, while we're about the size of where we were in about two thousand thirteen, fourteen. Um, we're actually seeing an elementary class that's larger than that. So you're exactly right. That is very positive for us.
You have some kids come and go, but when you have small, small class size going through your, our building. You have a small class size, the entirety of their span through the distance. And sometimes that hurts. And then if you have a big class size, sometimes it helps. So having those kids at a longer level coming through helps us project things.
I think this is slightly different than what the demographer predicted as well for our community. Because back then I think he had mentioned this local area is like a, a second home community. And this younger growth is so tight, I feel like.
You, usually yes. That's why we have, if you look at our numbers, we'll stay between. Hundred and seventy to hundred and ninety in those K through five grade levels. Then all of a sudden you'll see those bumps in six and beyond where we start getting over that two hundred mark. This is a little bit different than that. One of our largest grade levels and we can look at, I believe it's sixth grade or fifth grade. Which is unique. That hasn't usually been one of our larger grade levels, but it's already hit close to that two hundred mark. Um, I do continue to think we'll have large class sizes. Um, coming through. One of the predictive things you see in here in our internal model on that additional sheet is there was a low birth rate. During our sixth through twelfth grade school years. That is not unique to us. It's actually true across the Northern metro region. That we had a fairly low birth rate during this high school, middle school area, which is something all school districts are.
Any other discussion? Are you good?
I'm good.
All right. Uh, next up, nine point three, Executive Director of Operations and Safety.
Uh, probably my quickest updates today.
Quickest update.
You've heard it, we, you're rolling. All right, timer. Um, substantial completion on most of our projects, guys. We're still wrapping up aspects of the middle school track. I've sent you some Friday updates. Ninety percent of that work's being accomplished. We found some areas for remediation. We're still working through. Wanted to give you a quick overview. Surface lights that have been dark are scheduled to be repaired by the end of this week. Our internal maintenance is doing a lot of that lift. So incredibly grateful for those guys. Uh, and then just a high level Navitas over uh, update, kind of a timing perspective. We are working to uh, kind of uh, at-risk engineer on what some of the considerations are around rooftops, RTUs, some of our electrical infrastructure. Uh, they're working on kind of bid verifications over these next few weeks, hoping to have something. Ready for a workshop by November eighteenth will kind of be the next target date. So then hopefully by that November meeting, I can give you guys some broader context to what those project numbers are starting to wrap up and really look like as we roll into November first of December. And that's all I have. Operations and time. Questions?
Just wanted to say appreciate your work on a lot of this stuff, Ian. Um, Mr. Saxton. Um, you know, uh, especially with the, the track and everything else and, and working through all the contractual. Um, issues and stuff like that. So I really do appreciate all the work that you've been putting in on all this. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, KU misses you, but I'm glad that you're down with us.
All right, next up, oh, go ahead.
Ian, would you mind sharing? I know we, we had that chance to meet with Navitas. The scope of their work touched basically every building, correct? They, they kind of did a full district overview. Minus the transportation. So anything else you'd add regarding what they looked at?
You know, their scope is really looking at the M A P portions and the envelope of our buildings. They went through and looked at some of the historical. Forecast documents we'd leveraged and had access to. And then they've done several onsite visits to kind of really do a deep dive. Like they'll be back Friday to look at our lunch course structure. And that they're really trying to help us develop a three hundred thousand foot level of core focal points. So we can really start tackling on big deferred initiatives. So we maintain continuity of operations. And they're a big piece in that and they're helping us kind of navigate. I, you know, it's my first time kind of engaging with a firm from this design at risk theory and. Uh, Luke, who's our, who's our business development manager has really helped kind of enrich my knowledge around how they operate, how it's. How it's supported through statute from a state perspective. Um, but great things to come and we'll, as we get a little closer, we'll start to figure out what the financials look like and then. Allow the opportunity for a good conversation with Dr. Moss to see how we start tackling this from a financial perspective.
Thank you for making that short. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Next up, Executive Director of Grades PK through six and seven through fourteen.
Well, the first thing I'd like to do for our portion is it's National Principals Month this month. And so I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize these outstanding individuals. To my right, our principals are um, essential. And the success of our school district and working with our kids. So we just want to thank you and your counterparts that might not be here tonight, but thank you for all that you do every day for our kids. So. Moving in, um, Dr. McGinnis and I are, are grateful for this opportunity to share with you tonight as we've transitioned this role. To PK six and seven through fourteen, so elementary and secondary. It's been a lot of fun for us, um, navigating this. There's a lot that we do together as we look at our district as a whole. And it's also given us an opportunity to really dig in and work very closely with our, our buildings at our, at our levels. And so we feel like we have, um, probably a better understanding and a better pulse that's going on at the building. More conversations with our principals and staff, and that's been really, really helpful. And I think it will only help our district grow. So thank you for this opportunity. On our presentation, you will see we've started our year with a lot of professional development. And the first part of our professional development has been working with our new teachers. And so in the presentation that was provided, we have nine year one teachers, so first year teachers and 15 year two teachers. And so we do lots of professional development with those folks. Our principals work with them closely. Um, our instructional coaches or district instructional coordinators, they work with them in ELE and math. And then we have something called best practice workshops. And those are, there's five for new teachers, four for second year teachers. New teachers, we focus a lot on management type things that they need as they're coming in as new teachers. And then the second year, a lot of focuses on instructional strategies. Our building leaders, our cabinet, um, partners, they also help lead those meetings alongside of us and our instructional coordinators. They also have coaching cycles throughout the year, full days of observations. So we're doing a lot to try to pour into those new teachers. So we can continue to grow them. So they stick around here for our kids and, and we see lots of success with them. The next slide will show you the next thing that we do is professional learning communities. If you remember, we had late start Wednesdays in the past. Last year that was voted to go away. And so our new plan with that is really focusing on the PLC or the team times with our teachers. We have six days set aside throughout the year. Three of those are professional development days. Three are workdays and each of those days, they have time district wide to work together as well as another structure in the building. And Dr. McGinnis is going to share that with you.
So for professional learning communities, it's, it's not new to Smithville. We've kind of returned it back to the basics approach with what we're wanting to do. And it's more than just a common plan time. This is structured conversation that drives student outcomes. When you have teachers that teach the same content, getting together, talking about these four magical questions as defined by, uh, PLC. Rick Dufour is number one, what do we want students to learn? This is all about curriculum. It's the state standards. Number two, it's how do we know if they know it? This is the assessment piece. We have to have a scoreboard and some metric to understand where kids are in relation to the standard. Which gets us to questions three and four. After assessment, what do they need to know still? You know, what gaps are there? And then four is what's the enrichment piece? If kids already have it, where do they move on to next? So these structured, uh, conversations are happening, uh, in coordination with our instructional coaches. Susan Argot Singer and Carrie Chambers, as well as the RPDC, the Regional Professional Development Center is helping us K-12. Um, as we are moving into CBL and being strategic and thoughtful about how we're using our time and communicating with one another towards this goal. Uh, that level of guidance and adherence to the model is paramount.
So part of that, um, Dr. McGinnis mentioned is we have Jill Everett. She's our consultant through the RPDC. She meets with all of our elementary school teachers and principals. And she's actually implemented, helped them implement a data tracker. It's something that was started last year and it's across all three elementaries this year. Where teachers have a tool to track their assessment data, student performance data, to plan interventions, to plan instruction. And we can really keep track where our kids have been and where they are going.
And then a move the high school has made this year is to create a schedule that features common plan time for EOC tested contents. This can't happen unless you protect time to make it happen. Um, so the high school was able to capitalize on a schedule that prioritized the common plan time of EOC tested contents. And the slide that's up now is a deeper dive into the mechanics of what happens when we say the conversations are structured. This is how it's structured. This is how the PLC leaders were trained. This is how our administrators were trained. So there's uniformity and consistency. If you go from school to school, content to content, grade level to grade level. This is what those conversations look like as far as teaching the standards that we're held accountable to. Finding creative and thoughtful ways to measure, not ways to take up an entire class period, but you can get this done in two or three questions. Then teachers bring the results of those two or three questions together, have a conversation. And if your students score differently, possibly better than mine, this is collaboration. What did you do? What did you teach? How did you teach it? My job is to take that information and bring it back to my kids. So access to the best material is not dependent on the teacher who your student is assigned to. This collaboration ensures that every kid has access to the best information out there. And then of course we share questions three and four. What do we do if we need to intervene? Do we need to possibly look at interventions, reteach time? This is the skill set of a teacher to know how to identify learning and create learning, uh, with kids. They get to know the kids. They get to understand what's working, what's not working and apply the right intervention. On the flip side, if kids need enrichment, you know, as seen by the assessment, they have tools in their toolkit to increase the complexity and deepen the learning.
The next piece that we really dug into is our benchmark assessment system. In the past, we used something called NWEA. We had researched and, and teachers were, were asked, a few teachers participated in this, looking at what assessment we may want to move to. So we moved to iReady. It's actually more student friendly, more teacher friendly. It is a change though, which we're glad we made the change. Because now Desi's not even recognizing parts of the NWA assessment anymore. So this was a good switch for us. We gave our first benchmark this fall. We're assessing three times a year. The biggest change in this assessment that's been, um, maybe a challenge to, as we started navigating it, is its criteria reference or criteria norm. Which means it's based off of mastery of a standard. So if you have a third grade student and they take the assessment at the beginning of the year, they're not going to score very high because they haven't had third grade content yet. And that's normal. And so looking at that, it is correlated to the state assessment. It has a very close correlation, just like NWA did. When we give that mid-year assessment in December, um, we should see a lot of growth and then it will give us a target where kids should be by the end of the year. So it's showing readiness. We'll, uh, we use the data to plan interventions. They group students and provide, um, specific instruction based off the data and set goals with students. And our first report will go home at parent teacher conferences this year. It prints out a really nice parent letter. It shows you where your student is. It explains what each section means and, um, gives you some key terms and things you can talk to your student about. So those will go home kate.
And the last topic we'd like to hit tonight in our update is our progress towards competency-based learning in Smithville K-12, pre-K-12. So what you'll see is the elevator speech. We call it our elevator speech. This is our current understanding as defined by our administrative team of what CBL means and is going to look like for our, for our kids. So this started last year as building leaders determined this is a direction they want to go. Um, this fall, early fall, Dr. Moss kicked off to the entire staff at convocation. And we continued this work, uh, leading into the September 23rd date. Some pieces to pull out of this is clarity. You know, think about what we just talked about with PLCs. It's the communication. It's the clarity between colleagues. It's the clarity of curriculum kids are supposed to learn and teachers' understanding of that. As teachers have similar understanding of what the standards are, what they look like when they're demonstrated. We are much, much stronger and stay tight as a team instead of veering off and having different interpretations. So clarity is the main focus and then outcome that we hope to see is increased student agency. If it's very clear where students need to go, they're much more likely to get there. It removes the fog and the, the mystery about what am I supposed to be doing? Where am I supposed to go? This work brings that to light and hopefully intrinsically motivates kids to see where they are, where that target is and how they're going to get there. And eventually this will have some great connections to the Smithville portrait of a graduate, moving beyond just ELA and just math and those tested contents. They're contents we learn in a classroom, but some of those skills and competencies we've identified, we want Smithville graduates to have after they walk across our stage.
So with that, we had to do a little backward design and know where we wanted to get to. So this next page shows you a timeline. It's in phases, not years. As you will see, that's because this work might take three to five years really to do it well. You know, you go slow to, to go fast. You know, you, you do it well. So we're in those beginning stages. All the work is lifted, listed down the left-hand side. We started by identifying standards, started developing a communication plan and working on those proficiency skills. We have some groups that are faster than other groups and that's okay. Um, Dr. McGinnis is going to get into that, but I do want to point out if you see on here that reporting grading or reporting academic progress with skills versus grading. That's the very last thing that we, we talk about. We're not worried about right, that right now. So again, it's a process taking over time. Our teachers have, um, really done a great job of jumping in and being invested. Our building leaders as well. And again, Dr. McGinnis is going to share more about that.
So like we said, September 23rd was a big day and we even kicked off our communication plan by sending a note home to every family. So they knew what we were doing on that day. It wasn't a mystery what the teachers were up to. Uh, we wanted to be very clear and transparent. Um, a big shout out to our leaders in this room and other leaders that facilitated a lot of the work that day. Our principals, all of our system principals, our instructional coordinators, Renee Wilcox at the middle school, leading science and Andreanne Ambrosen. And her special education team were all instrumental in making this happen. Um, so just like we talked about, question number two is we want to know where the kids are, uh, because of assessment or enlightened by assessment. We wanted to do the same thing. We had a big day on the 23rd and getting feedback and measuring our growth that day was really, really important to us. So I wanted to share some stats with you from the teacher feedback. We have roughly 190 teachers. We were able to get about 87 of them to complete the feedback form. And make some sense of what happened that day from their point of view. So as far as overall message, uh, as described in the pack, when we started out, K-12, support staff, certified staff, everybody in the pack to hear this consistent message. Um, 85.6 reported a positive. I understand. It was a four-point Likert scale from strongly disagree to strongly agree. So we're calling anything in the agree or strongly agree, positive outcome. So 85.6 said, I agree and understand the message. Then we really dig down into the details. Devil is in the details and this is no different. So we start to get into some important vocabulary such as priority standards, proficiency scales, guaranteed and viable curriculum. A note that grading is the last piece. Um, and exclusively using our curriculum and instruction Google drive. So that way our guaranteed viable curriculum is not on this person's Google drive, in the Z drive, in the O drive. It is one place that's accessible by everyone and it sort of makes us future-proof. If somebody moves on, the work in that curriculum is still in one place. So as far as positive feedback and understanding the details from that presentation, 90.8% responded positively. So as far as the leadership, we gave a shout out earlier, but these guys did a lot of work beforehand to understand and learn themselves. Much less know who they were going to be in front of that day. ELA and math may be a little bit further along than journalism because they've had different levels of supports. And the state really gives a lot of guidance to these tested contents where some others don't have as much. So our leaders did a great job of knowing who they were going to be in front of, able to answer some of the questions that were coming that way and facilitate work. As far as feedback in regards to leadership, 84% positive. And then overall production, we asked folks, how productive were you or your team that day? Um, there was a tremendous amount of work time and this is a heavy lift and a new muscle to work for a lot of our folks. So it was a really, really big morning. 79.3% reported a positive, uh, feedback. And within that, 72% was strongly agree. So that's good. However, there's still obviously work to do. And with what we've been able to capture since that day, we've asked our small group leaders, facilitators to capture, where is your individual content? Because as you look through these phases, we're going to start to see different groups are in different places and they don't all need one canned presentation. They need to have, um, guidance and work related to where they are, um, not just stay in the group. So we want to honor where every group is individually and meet them where they are. So to further quantify what happened on September 23rd, uh, we checked that Google drive, right? We said, everything's going to go in the Google drive. So how much went in the Google drive? We were able to track 447 documents were either created or modified, which all ties into our curriculum. Are they all finished products with a bow on them? No. And we need some revision. We have to look, but the stuff is being built and that was by 190 teachers. Um, so with that information, we are really happy about the initial rollout, the initial work that was done. In fact, it's, it's kind of difficult because the iron is hot in our next PD days in February. So what can we do to keep the momentum going and keep the excitement going? Um, and make sure that February is just as, as successful, if not more. So we're very excited about the initial work. We see great things happening down the road. And the message to all staff has been, we're going to do it once and we're going to do it right. We're not going to rush through this and have to go back and redo it again. So if that comes at the cost of taking a little bit longer to make sure that we nail it, we're going to take the time to nail it. So that concludes our academic update. We appreciate the opportunity to tell you what we've been doing and what's going on and what we're excited about. And happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So regarding the, the feedback that you all received, uh, you said it was like 84% positive. Was there like room for suggestions of like things that could be done different? And you guys were able to get that feedback from the people that didn't have as positive of the reaction?
Correct. So there was a comment box at the bottom. So I don't know what comment, you know, correlated to, well, actually I could probably figure it out. But, um, the comments are there and they're kind of hot and cold and in between. And you know, somebody like this and somebody else, you know, dislike the, the same thing. Uh, with that though, with that sample size of 87, there were definitely some themes we were able to pull out of it. And like she said, um, the phases, it's not done in years. It's done in phases because the amount of work time we have directly correlates to how much we can get done in, you know, a, a chunk of time. So, um, a theme that really came out was this was hard work and this was a lot of it. You know, three hours of this, um, that was a whole bunch. So we're already looking at what could a structure be that allows for this level of productivity, but not wearing people out? But yes, themes were collected. Text boxes were on the feedback form as well.
We talked to our teachers a lot about failing forward, you know, not being afraid to take a risk. We took a risk by trying to do a huge rollout and I feel like it was very successful, but of course we want the feedback along the way. If somebody said, this isn't working, we need this next time. That's the information we're trying to gather too, to make sure, you know, we're flexible in our thinking too, and that we're meeting teachers' needs.
Okay. Very good. Any other discussion? Thank you guys very much. Uh, next, uh, general financial review.
Monthly process, not anything significantly different this month. We continue to have expected revenue from the state. There's not been any significant changes in state funding that we anticipate. I will share that based on the passing of Senate bill 727, the state has asked for a very significant supplemental pay. It's well over a hundred million dollars. As a reference, last year they, they requested less than $2 million. And so a fairly large impact that they are asking, little of that would impact us directly based on what they're asking for. Some of it's small school grants. It's funding for the $40,000 and $46,000 minimum pay for step one teacher seller as well as masters plus 10. Um, that was the only thing. Everything else is fairly in line with what we anticipate and expect so far.
Great. Uh, next up, 10.2, board committees.
Uh, had our finance committee meeting tonight and, uh, first topic was, uh, the first budget revision. We just went through that to kind of prepare support for, uh, that item, which is 11.1 tonight. So we'll talk on that too much since we're going to a minute. And then, uh, next thing we discussed, uh, we had further discussion on the bond and levy transfer coming up. Uh, a good point, uh, to make is Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 22nd, we'll have our, uh, community forum. Um, the basis of that is to explain our levy transfer and what the components of that look like. And then solicit some feedback and community input on, uh, the bonding capacity projects that we've outlined. Try to get that narrowed down and communicate out kind of what we're doing as we develop scopes and whatnot. With the, the, really the main point and note on the bonding, uh, stuff, which we'll talk about in 10.7 as well is, uh, we had some discussion around the design firm change and what that might look like as far as timeline for us to really get some design criteria and whatnot out for, for that. Unfortunately, I don't think we'll be able to have any of that for next Tuesday's meeting. But, um, I think it'll, it'll fall in line. So. Um, I think it'll, it'll fall in line. So. And then the uh, final topic we discussed was uh, reviewing our community membership. So we decided to go ahead and roll that out to the public, the application process. So we will be looking for and soliciting uh, community members to join that committee, bring them in. Um, obviously looking and hoping for some community members with some financial expertise would be uh, extremely helpful for that group. But any community member with an interest of. Understanding and learning about the finances of school district or goals and direction and having an opportunity to facilitate some input as well. Um, and lastly, we discussed uh. A few developments going on within the community in regards to the construction by central bank and then the potential addition there at Clay Creek. So. That's it.
Patrick, I have two questions for the community engagement. I know.
Yeah.
Six P M, uh, Tuesday, the twenty second in the high school cafeteria. Mark, you mentioned signing to where we're.
Yeah, there are multiple places to sign up. We've sent it out on all social media platforms. There are a link on our website as well. Link on our website as well. We're just trying to make sure we provide enough space for everyone. We have a little bit of prediction from. The last one we did, but would love to have as many participants as possible.
And applications, Patrick, for the apprentice committee, where would they do that?
Those will roll out. I don't, we didn't discuss the rollout plan that will follow with Mark and them, but they've already built the application as a Google form. Um, how, I assume we'll put that out through social media and solicit some local partners that we feel might have some interest. Uh, and certainly something to bring to the table. So as we're looking at financial advisors and stuff like that, so.
Yeah, the ID, what I thought is I would share the application one more time with the board to, to solicit any feedback. In the Friday update, based on that, we would revise if necessary, share it one more time than beginning next week. We would share that and kind of leave it open. The idea is to have two community partners. And so kind of as we get applicants and that, the board is able to review that, identify those people and. You know, we can close that for the year once we've identified those, but not necessarily um, close it until we do.
So again.
Great. And both those items, uh, that'll be discussed uh, next week. Uh, the capital improvement uh, project list. Uh, so potentially more than just bond spending and uh, both that items would be no tax increase that we're looking at. So. All right.
Um, just the, the uh. Uh, the conference is starting on Thursday night, I think. Uh, you can do the AI and education symposium, which starts at A M, but you have to register for that. Um, and then the next thing I think that we could do without registering officially is like the finance workshop for Senate Bill seven twenty seven. Which probably has some good information since we are affected by that. But um, you can download the app and pick all the different classes that you can attend, which is pretty exciting.
And.
Oh, and I did send an email or I had sent the email about the delegates assembly. So if you guys do have any. Feedback you want to give me ahead of that, um, let me know.
Make sure you reach out to our friendly MSBA delegates uh, to let them know your opinion. So. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Um, anything else? If not, ten point three.
Now, this is the. Third reading of MSBA twenty twenty four B policy update. Each year MSBA sends out a series of updates. This is, it's B because this is the second one. It's the third reading. In the memo, it talks about some changes. There's nothing really significant. We have had no input. Within this document, it is all from MSBA. The most significant change is removing policy FFA. Because that language has now been folded in policy KH.
Okay. We have a, a motion. We'll have a discussion after we have the motion. So do we have a motion to approve MSBA? Twenty twenty four B board, board policy updates for the third of three readings.
Seven.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? We have a second. Okay. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Yep.
It's not showing up.
Stand click think a couple times to get my.
Vote, sorry.
Vote for you.
Yeah. And you might have to. It's just as under discussion for me. It didn't change. It's been acting a little weird. There we go. Oh.
Possessed.
Like it just kicked me out completely.
Oh, no.
Okay, there we go. Okay, thank you. All right, next up, ten point four board policy KC for the third of three readings. We have a motion to approve board policy Casey for the third of three readings.
I'll move.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a second.
Asia.
Asia. Hey, any discussion?
I'm still not agreeing with this, but I will just support whatever the majority agrees to be.
Any other discussion? If not, please vote.
You need to get all the way out and back.
He got back. It just did. It's like it's kicking.
I saw this plan on joining the meeting every time. Okay, um, next up, ten point five.
I would like to add, we have made a slight adjustment within here. It's in the memo, but within policy. Sorry, J F C L A plus scholarships. There are three bullets within that policy that are specific that the district names and reviews, I'd like to give, allow Dr. McGinnis to share. His work, his collaboration with the high school to develop any changes to those bullets.
Yeah, uh, the question came up last meeting and it focused around bullet two. Where one of the, the goal was fifty percent or more of the district's juniors and seniors will enroll in advanced courses and or vocational courses. Kind of broad, kind of narrow, right? So I think we needed to further define what that is. So in conversations with the high school, what we thought that we offer that could apply to this are advanced placement, AP courses. The dual credit courses, Northland Career Center. Um, Northland caps, end caps, and then internship enrollment. We thought all of those pieces um. Met a qualification to be considered advanced courses or vocational courses. So we took that back and I ran numbers. So some additional numbers that I have. Currently, we have eight hundred and forty nine students and um, the high school AP dual credit. We have four hundred and twenty eight kids that are part of that and they account for nine hundred and eighteen enrollments. So a lot of kids have more than one. NCC and end caps, we have sixty six kids that participate. Internships is fifteen. So we have five hundred and nine kids out of the eight hundred and forty nine, which is fifty nine point nine percent. Um, that are in one of those bulleted classes. So we thought that would be a, a tighter metric than advanced courses or vocational courses to keep an eye on.
Thank you PJ. I, I was one of them who asked a question about that. I think this is great. I love that we're. You know, we're, we're highlighting and looking at the advanced, you know, the AP courses, but then we're also having kids do the end caps. And they're just, and sometimes maybe more important, those things too. So thanks for looking at the whole thing. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Are all of these policy removed from MSBA?
Except, except for that. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that explanation PJ. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Okay. I have a motion to approve twenty twenty four C board, board policy updates for the second of three readings. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who wants it? All right. Is there any discussion? If not, please vote.
We all got scum.
Oh, it keeps logging.
Kicking me out even though.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, all right. Ten point six, approved ten point four, ten point five, calendar revision. Um, we'll go ahead and get a motion in a second and then we'll discuss. So do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty four calendar revision as presented? So I have second motion. I have a second. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I'm, to clarify, we, we rarely would bring a calendar revision to you unless there was a. A pretty extraordinary circumstance that occurred, which did occur last May with the passage of Senate Bill seven twenty seven. It has, within that bill, it requires districts within charter counties. There are five charter counties in the state of Missouri. Clay County is one of them. And it's, and it is if any part of your district touches that charter county. In the Kansas City area, the two charter counties are Jacksoning, Clay. So this obviously impacts us. And if those that remember the school calendar and have been around long enough, we used to have a days requirement as well as an hours requirement. Then the state moved us to an hour requirement, which when we adopted this calendar, that was our aiming point was the hour requirement. We had a hundred and seventy day cla- calendar. We knew we could have three inclement weather days. We would still meet all our requirements. Then we would start AMI days. With the passage of Senate Bill seven twenty seven, because we are in a charter county, we now are required. By state statute to have a hundred and sixty nine school days. So if we would have had those three inclement weather days, we would have moved to one sixty seven, therefore not meeting the statute. So what you see before you is a revised calendar based in that. I would like to include that any school district in the state of Missouri. Beginning next year will receive a one percent bonus of state aid based on. Their previous year's calendar. So if we do hit a hundred and sixty nine days. We should receive approximately another hundred and ten thousand dollars from the state because we will meet that a hundred and sixty nine day threshold. There is now incentive for other school districts that don't touch a charter county to hit the hundred and sixty nine day threshold, obviously. So what you see before you is we got the calendar committee together. As a group of teachers and staff from all of our buildings. They come together each year. We brought them back together based on these new revisions. We created a survey that laid out three choices. The choice that had over seventy percent of the votes was that we have one inclement weather day. Then we start our AMI days. The AMI days were clearly spelled out thanks to the work from our building leaders. Along with Dr. McGinnis and Mrs. Harwood to determine what that AMI day would look like for our staff. Just so they had clarity of what they were voting for, but to have one inclement weather day, then we would move to AMI days. One thing the state has not clarified within this statute is. In. Previous statutes, there would be forgiveness after X number of inclement weather days. There is currently no forgiveness for charters county school district. So we would be held to a different threshold. Than other school districts throughout the state regarding the hundred and sixty nine days, we would have to hit it. Um, the good news is we still have the Friday before Memorial Day, which has been a day that we've used. Uh, as a makeup day, we could also potentially look at the workday, but at that point we would be to eight inclement weather days. Michelle Cradefield, last year before she left, look on average over the last five years, the last five years, and if you remember, last year was pretty heavy. We averaged about two point five inclement weather days per year. So for us to get to seven and eight would be pretty dramatic. Um, so we would have six days that we would be very safe to still hit that hundred and sixty nine. I did note in the memo, any type of red, there obviously won't be a blue snow day this year, although they had a great playoff run. Um, or green snow day, you cannot use AMI for, you do have to come back in. To make that day up, it cannot be used AMI. There was a local school district that tried that several years ago and got told no. Yeah, so AMI is a virtual learning day. What that will look like for our kids and our families, we are going to share during parent teacher conferences for clarity. But there will be a short time that we allow for a class meeting or a check in with your teacher based on the subject that you're learning and age appropriate as well. For our younger kids, we'll send a packet home. You can think of kids having choice within that. I remember. Um, you know, it was a thirty minute reading, go play outside for thirty minutes. There was an online math piece that you could do as well. So there, there will be things that our teachers are able to share and we also worked very cl- our, our lead, building leadership worked very closely. With our teachers to develop that AMI schedule and it's a consistent expectation. K twelve was the other piece we wanted to do for all of our staff that day. So that. Happy to answer any questions.
Any other discussion on the calendar revision? Nope. If not, please vote. Just thinking about it.
Look at it.
Okay. And I had already one out and came back in before this, but I guess I have to wait. Okay, great. Um, next up, ten point seven, uh, capital improvement projects.
A lot of conversation already has occurred around this topic, but the, the big takeaways from our last conversation is. Some of your feedback has been updated and added to the list. It's kind of foundational to start with the October twenty second consideration as we start to enter the community on. You know, further narrowing and figuring out what priorities and why, I guess we consider capital improvements moving forward. So any questions, happy to entertain us. Uh, one thing, I was going through this and I forgot to bring this up last meeting when we looked at this. Uh, in not a, necessarily a priority for uh, this upcoming bond, but just to keep track of it on as this list grows. Is uh, adding some sort of stadium remodel at the field, at the high school field. Okay, just add that as a list item.
Jackson, did you include the fencing around the field? Did that make the, okay?
Yes, sir.
And I think the remodel you'd be referring to would be sizes, grandstands on the sides. That was part of.
I know we had.
Ten year initial plan.
Yeah, we'd do a deep assessment on maintenance of field.
Yeah. Thanks for that.
Um, one that was brought to my attention today, so sorry I didn't get it to you before, but um, and talk about the middle school field situation, um, lighting?
Yep, we could add that. For the middle school?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, when it gets dark so early, is that something they've ran into yet? Like.
I know they're at a point where most of our games are occurring from a middle school perspective now.
On the high school. Because the lighting.
And their practice frequency timing, they're done well in advance of it getting dark.
Okay.
But we can certainly add it for.
So maybe it's not.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
And are you guys done traditionally before daylight savings? Your season?
Okay.
Okay.
The. One thing I would like to, to share that we are going to discuss on Tuesday during that community forum is. Uh, this is obviously a, a very long list and one that we would not be able to accomplish. In the short term, whether we went out for a bond or as we have money coming in to use as capital projects. But we do want to continuously engage with our community to keep that list because also things change. You know, there's multiple inputs that created this list from our students to our ten year plan that was developed in twenty twenty to the strategic plan that was worked on in. In twenty two, twenty three, to the community forum in April twenty two, as well as our students and our building staff and building leaders. So we want to keep this list moving as. and our building staff and building leaders. So we want to keep this list moving as we're able to take care of things and move it forward. And we want to make sure and honor that conversation that occurred during our last community forum in April of twenty two, twenty two and our during our strategic plan, those really overlapped real tight together over eighteen month period. So I will highlight those during our conversations next week, just to remind everyone that these were kind of on that alternative list of if we would have been able to, if we would have been able to 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 just remind where we were there and provide a little context of why some of those things do come up on that list.
Okay, great. Any other discussion on this point? If not, new business, uh, eleven point one. First budget revision.
Before you have our first budget revision, we really all our June budget, which is required by state statute, our projected budget, because we don't really know. There is a lot of things that are still coming to fruition that we just are guessing on. In October is really our first true look at our budget that we really feel more solid and comfortable with what revenues will come in and what our anticipated expenditures will be. In this book, you'll see our strategic plan. Pardon me, you'll see our mission. You see the work that we've done over the last twenty plus years on the district facilities, starting with the middle school addition in nineteen ninety two, which the previous building that was open before that was nineteen sixty nine, our high school. Um, all the way through to how we do the budget timeline process, which now includes a finance committee beginning last year. Uh, to to our different pieces. The first place I want you guys to turn to is on page eleven. It shows our enrollment. And I I do apologize, our our one that is in the document that you can see online, it does have a couple incorrect numbers. We will get that corrected. That's why you guys have a printed sheet in front of you. It is minor. There's nothing large within there, but I would like to share our enrollment is, as I spoke to you earlier, our K six enrollment is almost at one thousand two hundred and eighty students, which puts us back into nineteen twenty. Uh, so we are seeing that growth. That's a very positive thing for us, knowing that we were going to graduate with a very large class. That next page, page twelve, we'll have a lot of revisions as the ASBRs get approved throughout the state. I know Karen has submitted ours. We're still waiting for that last piece. And then on page thirteen, you'll see our revenue that is coming in. The largest impacts that we had was our assessed valuation is three point two four percent. We originally anticipated that a little bit higher at four and a half percent. So that does impact the money that we have coming in. There were also two pretty big chunks that we took hits on as well. Our children's service fund grant is reduced by just a little less than ninety thousand dollars. That is something that we adjust our budget that we use that money for. So now we have reduced our expenditures by an equal amount. That is not necessarily the case in our title funds throughout the area. Title one funds were significantly reduced by in all school districts for us, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That is not something that we can necessarily reduce our funds, so we're going to offset that with with local funds. Just so you're aware. On the other page, you'll see our expenditures. We continue to work after our board goal of being a top paying district. Um, and that's not going to change. We have great benefits for our stu- for our staff, whether that's board paid, health and dental, which is unusual. We actually have three health plans that we're able to uh, provide for our staff. On page fifteen, we do have our new tax levy as well as our formula, our Prop C goes up, our state Formula Eight continues to go up. And then on the next page, page sixteen, you can see from our projected to our budgeted, how our revenues changed. Throughout there, the one piece that you may notice by fund on the top of page sixteen is our Fund One increased from from what we projected to where we are budgeted because we moved a nickel from our Fund Four over to Fund One. So it's just a correlation of that Fund Four reducing by the five cents that our Fund One went forward. And then I'll actually take you guys, there's the function breakout, the object breakout to page twenty four. One of the things the finance committee asked us to do for functions one thousand through two thousand ninety nine is to create it a running document of any changes that are greater than ten percent. So within here, you'll see our changes that are ten percent. I already spoke to the title funding. That is federal funding that we had reduced. Our family and consumer science function thirteen thirty one is personnel. The funding for that remained the same. Our person, our person that we hired has more experience. Um, project lead the way is one of, it's a part of a programs called CTE, our career technical education. The state provides a lot of funding for that, and one of the things they do is they give out fifty fifty grants. So if the district allocates fifty percent of the money, the state matches it. That's why you see an increase of three thousand six hundred and seventy five dollars. Not a lot of money, but it is a ten percent variance, so we made sure and include that. Our speech language pathologist in our initial projected budget was miskeyed. We we have that corrected. Function twenty two thirteen, S R funds are beginning to drop off. MMD grant is a S R fund. And then twenty five forty six has been part of our board goal this last year of continuing to focus on safety and security. So that's why you see an increase within that line. And then these functions, the the main thing I would want you to understand at the bottom of the page regarding Karen upkeep is with Master Saxon joining his new position, he has adjusted the money within twenty five forty two, twenty five forty four and twenty five forty five. It's all equipment, so it's all fun for money that he has adjusted to more be representative of where that money's being spent rather than leave it all in twenty five forty nine. Um, we've also reduced that, knowing that we have a deficit spend this year by offsetting some of our fund for costs. With bond underruns. So we've been able to manage as we've reduced revenue, we've also managed to reduce expenditures um, to make sure we can still be aggressive with compensation and benefits during the upcoming year and staffing. So um, at the end of the day, if you look at that last page, in June, our expected um, fund balance was going to be nineteen point two percent. We are now at nineteen point seven percent. So we have improved that and continue to focus on that it is even with lower than expected revenues, we've we've managed to relook at our expenditures and prioritize those with that in that and feel very comfortable with what we have put in front of you. Would be happy to answer any questions regarding the budget revision.
Yeah, so the the main things that we we talked about this in the finance committee, um, obviously as you touched on in June, when we passed this budget, we did pass it with the deficit at that time. Uh, we had discussion about that, that deficit number being very comparable to past years. So the two things I would just ask the board to look at, uh, just to support the uh, review is in the, when you look at paragraph three, yeah, we show our initial deficit that we discussed in June at eight hundred and thirty. You look in the back to the first paragraph where our deficit expectations are at today, that is a reduction. So as we talked about in June, that yes, we're passing a deficit budget. As in past years, administration is going to continue to work the budget to reduce that expected deficit. And in just a few short months, you can just compare those two numbers to see that we are on track to keep managing that deficit down, uh, even given a lot of the circumstances that we made some assumptions on like we do every year in the budget process that we didn't hit on. But it does show the work that's happening uh, from a management standpoint uh, with the district to continue to manage that deficit. So.
And uh, on top of that, I I'd just say, you know, when we're, when we run our financial projections in the finance committee, uh, we expect that on non reassessment years, we're going to bump down and then on reassessment years, we're going to bump up. So it's going to go negative, then positive, negative, positive. So we're going to probably bounce back and forth between a certain range going forward. And in some of these projections, uh, we've also included uh, here for, you know, a couple of years out is, uh, we're already accounting for a reduction in state funding uh, for our transportation formula. So those are the things that we are trying to account for. It's hard to account for everything. But this is expected that this is kind of going to be a zigzag going forward. You know, next year being a reassessment year, we'll we'll be uh, on the plus side of this, so.
And with the reassessment year, um, you know, we had that discussion in the finance committee about the sixty four units going in the development south of town, the addition, new construction is not conflicted by Hancock Committee. So right, so those additions of homes and new construction we know are coming, they're planned, they're currently being developed. We'll see those next year in their full capacity. So be non restricted.
And specific to the growth that Patrick's talking about is we have the opportunity to partner with the city and they brought in their planning and zoning. There are sixty four units that are going to be placed. That is the road going south of Central Bank. There will be three roads off of that that will be sixty four rooftops coming in. They're going to be quadplexes, is my understanding, and they will be potentially pouring foundations next month. They're just waiting for that road to be put in. The other um, complex that is no dirt being moved right now is up by Clay Creek. There are two hundred and sixteen units planned in the future. There is not a final plaque yet that the city's approved. They kind of approved the initial plaque, but there's not final plans. So to anticipate that, we're probably looking at FY twenty seven, FY twenty eight with with those rooftops being completed. But something we need to start planning for now and being aware of as we look at managing the size of our buildings.
Meaning we might have to do a build and addition at some point.
Yeah, so building addition, boundary lines, all of those different pieces will be things we need to consider in the future. Absolutely.
Yep, absolutely. Any other discussion?
No, I was just gonna tell Karen and Mark and then the finance committee, thank you. Um, you guys put a lot of work into it and I can read this and I understand it all. And it's very well done and you guys just explained everything. Thank, so thanks for doing that extra work.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, we have a motion to approve the first budget revision as presented.
Still moved?
Yeah, motion. We have second. Okay, no other discussion? Please vote. This is what Randy does. This is supposed to be for the budget.
Randy's down there messing with.
Supposed to program this for like my budget discussions in spring, so.
I like that tactic and idea.
But don't, don't, don't consider it. All right, great. Uh, next up, eleven point two, uh, bill pays bills for payment for October twenty twenty four. Miss Brut.
Yeah, do a motion.
Oh, want to do that first? Yes, do we have a motion? And we got a motion and a second? Okay, discussion.
I think our district does great in transparency, so I'm not suspicious of anything. I just think it's uh, our organization's great. I think it's great to have some clarity on some specific items. I was going through uh, some things I just didn't know what they were. And if I'm questioning, I'm sure the public might flip their head and have some questions, so. We had, we had uh, over thirty five thousand in technology improvements, and I'm just curious what those technology related things were. And I guess, Randy, that would be.
Yeah, the the one thing I do want to say is I don't know if we can give you all the details, but we can definitely give you that all in the the Friday update and certainly be able to share that with you. Um, we just want to make sure that anything we share is accurate um, within that, so.
I just didn't know if we bought new computers and we updated stuff. Um, just for the specific, um, the board, the report that we have for October.
So it's, uh, there's nineteen thousand in CDW government CO tech supplies.
And that, and and that's okay, Randy. If you don't remember.
It's okay to not refer.
We want to make sure it's accurate, so if we could just follow up with.
So is that one of the ones you'd like more details?
Curious about.
Absolutely.
Game Time Athletics, we did improvement of grounds for some seventy three hundred. I just didn't know if that was like that football field, like the middle.
It's a reoccurring service contract that uh, sustains the softball field and baseball field when during the season.
Okay.
So that's the irrigation, uh, mowing, striping, stuff like that.
We did um, district leadership forum and improvement of instruction. That was about forty one thousand and it's probably a brag moment what we've done to help. Stop, I don't know what those were. I was just curious.
Oh, the EAB, that's our contract with EAB. It is a yearly contract and yes, exactly what you're referring to is are the pieces that we get out of it. We are also working with them on our ELA revision. Um, pulling them for their resources with their national research. They can um, provide that for us. We've also used them for a variety of things, like we can send them, hey, give us all your research on this. And part of our agreement is them giving that back to us. Was another one you were discussing, the Edmentum? Was that another one that that you had hi- highlighted? Okay.
That one was twenty two thousand. I was just curious, but if you don't know.
Do you want to speak to Ed? Or we can get it back to you.
I might have to look at that. I believe we have several products through Edmund, so I'd have to break it down.
It's multiple, yeah. Yep.
Uh, our food service, I think, I think the public doesn't realize, I probably didn't much either. Just for September, we had a hundred and ten thousand dollars in food that's provided to students. I was just curious and we don't know the exact number, but how much of that did we get back from, from families and do we have like a lot of free and reduced lunch? And do we get those monies reimbursed from?
Yeah, great, great question. Um, Ian has learned a lot about free and reduced lunch that he probably didn't think he ever wanted to know. But he got, that was one of the baptisms when you start in July and you have food service onto you. That will be probably our monthly contracted service. We also have a set of money that does come back to us. Our food service contract is roughly flat to a positive, to the point that when it is a positive, that money is encumbered and required to be spent within our food service systems.
Such as the steamer that was.
Yes, man.
And direct utilities, all that.
HVAC.
They saw the steamer now. That was expensive.
We, we are.
You just saw the one last year.
And a surplus reinvestment back into our food services.
Yes.
Perfect. Um, another one, I just have a comment and I might get spiked for it, but the homecoming barricades that we paid twelve hundred and eighty dollars for, is there any way that we or somebody can advocate with Parks and Rec maybe to donate those since we have those already available with the city? Or do we rent those from the city or who do we rent the barricades from?
So we actually, we procured them through a company in cooperation with the city as part of our parade requirements. So, um, I'd I'd have to ask the city if they'd be in favor in supporting any additional supplies or resources they might have. But out of those conversations, we we solicited the barricade.
I was just curious.
Part of that, it's part of that parade setup structure, and that was kind of a requirement on our end.
Um, one of the line items, which I got clarification on, but it might be good, twenty one thousand dollars in peaches.
Yeah, so you guys also approved the FFA to travel to the national conference. One of the ways that they make money each year is peach sales. So, um, they do that, I believe, throughout the entire summer and then that's the delivery time. So they've collected money and got collected orders throughout their, you know, selling phase, and they use their money that they make off peach sales to help fund their FFA convention as well as our organization, our student run activity of FFA as well.
Yeah, I was looking through and I thought twenty one thousand peaches, that's a lot.
We just like peaches. A lot of peach pie.
Everybody likes.
They sell a lot of them.
Good peaches.
Food service equipment, we already mentioned steamer, which is great. And then the final one is the phase three. There was a lot of campus improvement, and I know these are probably dispersments of contracts that were previously approved. I was just clarified, this was for the bus.
Which, which pieces?
Um, phase three, there's. Um, phase three, there's just different campus improvement, Epic Construction, DLR Group, Hollington, I was just curious what those were. Wasn't specific to say this is for the middle school, the high school, I don't know if it's carpet, I was just curious.
Yeah, I, we'd have to go back and look at the individual payout requests.
Some of them are pretty pricey, so I was just curious.
Most, most of it's part of the the original design intent of the phases as we went through our bonding projects.
So when, I want to make sure I'm on the right spot with you, um, Mr. Pro, you're at um, campus improvements, transportation center, campus improvements, transportation, transportation center, all those things that say.
I just had the campus improvement, the transportation center was identified that the rest of them weren't specific to where they were, so there was there was uh, about two hundred thousand dollars in campus improvement, which is good, we're improving the campus, I was just curious like what.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a range of projects for phase eight camps, so we had transportation as a bucket, phase eight, which was a campus improvement bucket, which included everything from bleachers on in.
Oh.
Mm-hmm. We can get that to you.
I think it's good just to say, and I thank you for bringing that up, but if you have any questions on this, or that anybody in the community asks, because, you know, I'm on, been on board five years and it's taken me, you know, I still have to ask a couple of times, and everybody will tell you, I I do ask those questions, but it, yeah, and you can always ask beforehand, or and then they can actually give us the numbers, so I think it's, it is good to ask.
So, uh, two or three that we need to follow up on, the tech question.
I wrote down CDW, Game Time Athletics, I feel like we answered, Edmentum. Uh, barricades is really a question that we may, oh, yeah, it will, and then the phase eight pieces, and then we'll work with Denise and PJ to get the Edmentum. Sit.
If you want it, sure, I I just had to look it up, it was the um, Study Island, which is a a product we use to practice, like instructional practice online and for assessments as well, and then high school credit recovery. So Study Islands use K twelve and credit recovery resources for the high school.
Dude, when we say credit recovery, does that make sense?
So, two questions. All right, any other discussion? If not, please vote. Okay, next up, eleven point three. Property and liability insurance renewal.
Yeah, I provided a memo, high level, the reason you guys are seeing this in October, I've been working with Miller and Denali since really I started, got a hold of the conversation in in the July. You guys are seeing it now, because we are seeing an increase in insurance premiums by about a forty-one thousand. You know, that increase comes at a, you know, our rate increased by about two point five percent, which generates about seven, eight hundred in increased value. The biggest driver, though, of our increase is coming from the reassessment of our high school, middle school and Horizon Elementary, which equates about nineteen point five million in increased property value. That's the biggest driver, and then, of course, the addition of our transportation facility. Um, since those conversations transpired, I pushed uh, uh, Miller and Denali pretty hard to start trying to dig a little deeper in terms of how did we reach the numbers on the nineteen point five? And as we were having those conversations, um, Glatten Filter, who's our carrier, actually used two assessment firms, E two and CoreLogic, uh, to kind of wait and understand the reassessment values of that property, and of course, they went with the lowest kind of consideration to use their forecasting for our values. Um, and then logically, after we had that conversation, it's okay, have you considered checking the market in terms of a rate perspective? I provided that to you guys in an additional memo update, as you can see, he solicited about five different firms, three declined to offer because our current rate target is at a point seven six, and the market's averaging from a point two zero through a point four oh. Um, so based on that recommendation and conversations I had with him, that's why you better just now see it in October instead of August. Um, from there, his recommendation and my recommendation to you guys is to move forward with the forty-one K increase. Um, and then, uh, we've already had conversations with Millen and Denali that we need to consider a reassessment and a rebid process for all of our providing property liability going out into the spring. Uh, questions around that, guys?
I, I just have some comments.
Oh, you're good.
Our increase is really fifty-two thousand, because our original deductible is twenty-five thousand, but increase our deductible to fifty thousand to lower the premium, but increase our risk.
Yeah, great, great point, Joe, um, what she's, what she's getting at is, and that, that wasn't them, that was me. That was me saying, hey, I don't want to carry so much, how do we move that needle down a little bit and own a little more of our risk? So we adjusted that piece of our insurance to reduce ten thousand off that annual cost, yeah, great point.
And then the other thing is, um, my other concern is our policy being that this is over fifty thousand dollars. Um, the RFP process should be that we post this in the paper, we advertise it. One brokerage, um, while they can shop, and I'm sure you can go to the most insurance brokerages that are generic, you know, Shop Progressive and Allstate or WGL or somebody else, but that's still one brokerage property, so other brokerages, you truly did the RFP where you allow multiple brokerages, whether it's an individual or a broker that sends it to multiple bids. Their wholesale rates may be different based off of their volume, so I still think to do our due diligence to the district for our budgets, we should follow our our process and we should go ahead and put that out in the paper and get bids and solicit different brokerages.
Okay. Yeah, context, it reminds me of similar conversations with Jay down, right? And your CM firms, and we use them as a consultant to represent this faction, they solicit multiple bids for construction management projects. And we take the lowest bid from their consulting processes, very similar brokerage conversation, how do we go consider alternatives to that, that's a great point.
Ian, I wanted to point out, you know, um, I've been on the board the longest you've been, we've seen these changes here, I think what you, you know, it's nothing you ever want to see as a forty-one thousand increase, but it's happening all over, and it's due to a reason. I mean, we have added square footage, we've we've updated things, and you did point out, it's only a two point five percent rate, I I think you you did a good job about saying that, it's it's, um, and I, you pointed out really good that, you know, some of these companies don't even want to look at us because we already have such a good low rate, so. I I just wanted to point that out, you did very good saying that in your email, and I, it sucks, but you know, I think it, we're all seeing that a hit, but I appreciate you doing the due diligence and and working and and looking just to see if there is anything else, but.
Yeah, and the the credit goes to Miller and Denali, I mean, Chris was a great partner, trying to have that conversation, Karen, Karen stood in the trenches and started Dr. Moss for many hours, trying to help me deliberate on how we, how we start moving this needle a different direction, so. I think there's a great opportunity as we look at the spring, um, you know, our brokerage company's recommendation is we continue to move forward, so we don't have a a short rate penalty structure, or we don't cause, you know, skepticism in terms of why we're hitting the market early compared to our renewal cycle. I think those are all great points, and that's why my recommendation is we we reconsider this topic heavily.
Okay, that makes sense.
Uh, uh, very good points, Susan, I'd just say, you know, it sounds like a very reasonable plan moving forward, so.
Contract that you want to.
Which, this one?
We approve every.
They renew every year.
Year, so what's the renewal date?
It's uh, it was actually supposed to be effective, I thought, August four. We usually, I'd have to go back and look, because, no, that's right as I came.
In April twenty-five, we get, we did our RFP process, follow our policy, then they would have to rebid along with other partial coverage that came.
Yeah, I think if the board's desire was to consider alternative brokerages with providers considerations, I I think we could consider it all at that time.
I I just want to make sure we're following our policy, because having one broker, even though they're able to broker wholesale with different companies, isn't really an RFP, because it's staying guide property, who they try to wholesale it with, to do our due diligence, I think we need to follow the process within our policy and make sure that we have three separate brokers farming that out and asking their wholesale prices as well, so if it's not, if this is only until April or August.
Yeah, August one.
Well, it's for an annual, probably. It's the coverage is for one year end.
Yeah, thank you, Joe, for that feedback.
Any other discussion? I have a motion to approve the property and liability insurance renewal.
Still moved.
I have, I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, please vote. It's consistent, well, it's consistent. Right, next up, I'll point out, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved, second.
Motion and a second, so, please vote. We are adjourned, thank you for all of our TV watchers.
Go home.
I forgot to tell you all, I, Christie Mellon said.